The meeting is called to order. Welcome to the Wednesday, December 6th Board of Education meeting. We met from 6:00 to 7:00 in executive session to talk about personal issues and contractual negotiations. At this time, if we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dave Hurst.
Meredith Moriarty.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Charmaine Woodessinger.
Jody Monroe.
Christine Beck.
Lynn Lundhart.
Michael Cooper.
Holly Dellenbach.
And Judy Kehoe.
At this time, pig students, you are required to stay here till 9:00 PM unless the meeting gets out earlier. So, if we're not done at 9 o'clock, we will take a break. You can come up and sign out, but hopefully it'll be your lucky evening and you will be out before then. So, we will see. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from the November 15th, 2017 Board of Education meeting? Okay. Do we have anybody here from the Student Senate? Oh, on up. State your name. Yep. You can either take it out or raise it, whatever works for you.
Hello? My name is Renato Maritata. I'm here representing Student Senate. And I also want to cover three quick things that we've been doing this school year. So, first of all is the backpack program, which we've continued to grow. We're up to 70 backpacks. And we have weekly Panera shipments and people going to the supermarket and getting food to keep that sustained. And as of right now, it looks like we can keep that sustained for enough long period of time until further notice. It's going very well, actually. We're very glad. Second of all is holiday food drive, which we do every year. And that's going smoothly. We have boxes distributed to every homeroom and those are filling up. Most of the centers are reporting that all of their teachers have collected a good amount of food and we're expecting to get a lot of food from that. And lastly, we're running something new this year called the Student Forum. And it's a way to engage the student body and connect them with Senate so we could therefore talk to the administration on changes. And what we do is we take all the responses from the Student Forum, which is open to all students. It's a Google Doc, Google Forum. And we take what's written in those Google Forums and we talk about them during our Senate meetings. And something that's came up recently that we're thinking of talking to the administration about is possibly having the courtyard open during the summer so students could go outside if they want and relax during their free periods or during lunch. And that's something that we haven't had here, so we think that students could really benefit from that and relax. And that's it. Any questions?
No. Thank you, Renato.
I do actually have a question. Does Student Senate purchase the furniture that's out in the glass hallway?
I'm not sure if Student Senate did, but I'm actually, I don't think we did.
But it's a nice addition because I happen to be in the school during the day one.
Yeah, it's used a lot.
It gets used quite a bit, yeah.
If you walk through there during the school day, kids aren't constantly using it, even during like 5:00, 6:00.
Great. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And Lynn reminded me, I was so excited to hear Renato talk about Student Senate. I forgot to ask if there was any discussion on the minutes. Anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Sorry about that. Superintendent's report?
Thank you. One quick announcement, the District Strategic Planning Committee, we developed a survey and that was sent out to staff today and the community today. Middle school and high school students will be completing that the week prior to break. We did do some hard copies, pamphlets, and dropped them off in different places around town and brought them around the district for anyone who didn't have computer access. And will, any of those we get back will manually enter. And then the hopes is that we'll be able to compile those in early January and share those results out. And we have a committee meeting at the end of January to look at all of that. And then in February, I'll update the board on some of that feedback we've received between the community forum and the survey. And then I'd also ask Judy Kehoe if she could give the board an update on our power purchase agreement. So, you can kind of, it's been a long time in the process and so I thought it'd be good to hear an update on that.
Yeah, we have a little bit of new news with that. It's been close to two years. It'll be two years this January since the district entered into the power purchase agreement with then Sun Edison, which then due to a corporate changeover became Forefront Power. The term, or the agreement is intended to give the district savings on our energy purchases once the solar array is developed. But at this phase, it's up to the developer to try to make this project happen. So, they, since the agreement was signed, have been trying to identify an appropriate parcel, get into a lease of that land with the owner. They've done that. It's a parcel that's still within the boundaries of the Bethlehem Central School District, but it's straight out down Delaware Avenue, just past the power lines and on a parcel just past that. They have to work to get the interconnection agreement in place with National Grid. And then they also have to go through several levels of approval at the town of Bethlehem. So, after many months of review, at the November 15th zoning board meeting, the zoning board of appeals unanimously approved their variance request. There's two differently zoned parcels that are part of the site and the access road was going through one of them that required a variance. So, that was granted to them. So, next up, they're going to the town's planning board where they will consider visual impacts and any other impacts that they think need to be addressed for the benefit of the community. And then once, assuming they get that approval, I believe the town board has to take a vote as well upon the recommendation of the planning board and then they're ready to begin their construction. According to the agreement that they have with us, they are supposed to have this operational by November of 2018. So, the clock is ticking and I know they are working diligently to help move this forward. One of the other things that occurred within the past week is we received what's called a 60-day letter from Forefront Power. And what that does is it gives us time to consider whether we want to maintain the tax-exempt status of this parcel as it's developed or whether we want to potentially consider getting into a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with this. So, we reached out to the town of Bethlehem. We're trying to set up a meeting with them in the next two weeks because they too got this 60-day letter. Broadly speaking, just so you have a little bit of background, the state incentivizes any kind of renewable energy project. So, whether in this case it's solar, they also do it with wind energy. So, there is a blanket exemption for these types of projects and residential as well. So, if you see homes in the neighborhood with solar panels either on the roof or in the yard, those two are covered by this particular exemption. They're trying to incentivize obviously green energy. If you get into a pilot agreement, NYSERDA has some recommended pilot structures for you to consider with this. They're very, very low. Obviously, they're trying to encourage these types of developments. It becomes a fine line because if you go too high with it, the developer could say this project is no longer economically viable and they could pull out. But that's going to be the nature of the conversations, one with the town, what are they doing? And try to get ourselves aligned with what makes sense with that. Because it's a relatively short timeline, I'll be coming back and we'll have updated information for you with what that involves. But I did want to mention it tonight just so that you're aware. And then if you have any strong feelings, one way or the other, about incentivizing these types of projects, at least to start thinking about that now.
When, the 60-day timeframe is when?
Is around January 20th, 2018.
Judy, if, if we didn't do a pilot, what's the other option?
If we don't do a pilot, there is no additional revenue stream that would come into the district. We would just be exercising our power purchase agreement, meaning that once it was active, you know, in commercial operations phase, we would be getting the credits on our utility bills.
It would be tax exempt.
But it would be tax exempt. Right now, it's tax exempt. The law is set up so that unless the town would have to adopt a local law, we would need simply a board resolution that we would opt out of granting those tax exemptions, which means it's taxable and it means everybody who was doing any kind of solar or wind projects would be subject to paying tax on the value of those additions.
Is the town affected by our decision?
We can act independently, as I understand it. But with, right now, the town has not opted out. They seem to be leaning towards not opting out, but they are considering the pilots.
Okay, so both, both the town and the board can act independently?
Yes.
But they have worked together historically, like the one, the pilot with National Grid. The school district worked with the town on that, come up with that agreement, as you would call it.
Oh, yeah, the now, the PSEG.
PSEG, yeah. The parcel's in Bethlehem?
The parcel must be in Bethlehem.
In Bethlehem, okay.
Yes. And that's why it's going through the Bethlehem.
Is it, is it New Scotland, is it?
No, it's in the town of Bethlehem and it is within the Bethlehem Central School District. That's why they have the joy of going through the zoning board of appeals and the planning board at the town level.
Any other questions?
I guess I'd just like some more information before the next board meeting regarding the pilot and versus tax exempt. I guess I'd just like a little more information on that.
Right. And I'm gathering information on that as we speak, so.
You'll have an update, you think, from the meeting with the town prior to the next board meeting?
Yeah. Yeah. The timeline is pretty short for us, so.
So, can you send that out with the administrative updates?
Yeah. Yeah, when I have it, I will release it.
You mentioned that there's some, you put some hard copies of the survey.
Yep.
Around town.
Yep, we dropped some in the library, we brought it to senior services.
There's some right here.
There's some examples right here.
Do we have those locations on our website?
Are they on the website where they're available?
I'm not sure if the locations are on the website, but I know that the hard copy is posted on the website so people can print it. But I can double check and see if they're on there.
We can add those.
Yeah.
That's a good suggestion.
Okay. Board of Education report. I'm just going to talk about Shakespeare. This weekend, December 8th, 9th, and 10th, we have Much Ado About Nothing, so spread the word to your friends. And next weekend, December 15th, 16th, and 17th, it should be a really good show and I hope everybody can come out and attend. Anybody else want to?
Out of the press, I have, this was legislative priorities for 2018. And I think I have enough copies for.
Pass it down.
Just make sure everybody gets it. And this is based on the results of the business meeting and the priorities that members have put forward. So, this will be basically the program for the year. In addition, I just want to comment that we really need to stay focused on what's happening in Washington because obviously it'll affect us greatly if the budget goes through just as it is. It's going to affect us in many ways, whether it's financially or, you know, the charter school movement or whatever. So, we need to be watchful.
I went to a few different things. I went to the Capital District School Board Association meeting and there, a man from State Ed, Director of State Education Finance for K-12, Brian Chesnesky. Thank you. Spoke at length about a proposal that's going to the Board of Regents about school calendar, the 180-day requirement and how they may be changing or recommending changes on how those days are calculated. And the proposal will be going through in the winter before the Board of Regents and may be approved and then districts would have to respond starting in February, which I know is perhaps a little bit later than we usually start reviewing the calendar for next year. But just a heads up that we may have to, it may influence how our calendar is structured. They will be passing out sample calendars based on the, any proposals that are accepted. We had a meeting yesterday of the district-level safety team, which involves principals and representatives from across the district. And there, I know there have been some different school evacuation drills going on, et cetera, but that team is moving forward with some additional meetings and what are called table trap drills of emergencies to start planning how the district safety team can support building level safety teams. And lastly, I spent some, a few hours at the lab school last week and went to a freshman science class, a senior social studies class on law, and a ninth-grade English class and just observed that and participated to some extent with some of the students and the faculty there. And also attended a community meeting where they were awarding butterfly grants. So, as board members, and also for the newer, but you can observe classes with advanced notice. And it was really interesting. I hadn't been to the lab school for a while. I know Mike and I used to go. And so, it was really nice to see different kinds of instructions taking place. And wanted to thank the teachers for allowing me to visit their classrooms.
Also, we had Patricia Fahy and was it Neil Bremsen came in last week and talked to us about different things that are going on in the legislature and, you know, they have some concerns about some of the changes that are going to occur, which was what you were leading to with changes in budget. And so, we have to keep a mindful eye out for the changes that are coming.
Right. I know the Educational Conference Board, which is composed of all seven major educational groups, you know, besides school boards, administrators, superintendents, teachers' union, business officials, Big Five, I think that might be a PTA probably also, have come out with a recommendation for a $2 billion, $2 billion increase in state aid. At the same time, the state is predicting that there's a $4 billion deficit. So, who knows what this year might bring, especially as I said, what's happening in Washington could greatly affect.
Affect us.
Affect us.
Well, I think also on that vein, Lynn, you know, with the caps for meeting or other opportunities, I think training is going to be so important for us to try to keep up with additional training, additional seminars that keep us in the loop, but also inform us of, you know, our obligations and how we may be able to work within this kind of environment. So, I think as much as possible, I know the schedules are tight and we already have commitments for the board, but when there's trainings about finances and the budget, et cetera, it's good, I think it's just going to encourage people to go because we've been through it before. And I think part of the way we got through it was everyone being, not necessarily agreeing, but being on the same page and having enough information to make those hard decisions.
Anybody else? Okay. At this time, our athletic director, Lynn Keys, is going to recognize some student athletes and give us an update and some athletic discussion. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome our student athletes, their families and friends. Every conclusion of each season, we have a recognition here at a Board of Education meeting just to kind of recognize the incredible athletic accomplishments from several of our very, very special student athletes. So, with that, the first thing I would like to do is congratulate every single one of Bethlehem Central's fall varsity programs met the designation of New York State Public High School Athletic Association Scholar-Athlete Teams. You see all the programs listed. It's a incredible accomplishment and as we know here specifically at Bethlehem, student athlete is not just a phrase, it's really the truth. Our athletic teams, the students on those teams are top of the light. So, congratulations, round of applause to our student athletes. Those are teams that have collective averages of over a 90, so incredible. With that being said, I would like to first recognize our section champion and our state qualifiers from our girls varsity swim and dive team. They are coached by Carrie Ann Santacola and the dive coach, Anthea Morris. Unfortunately, neither could be with us this evening. Ladies, when you hear your name, come on down. I'd first like to congratulate Megan Novak. Megan was the section two champion in the 100 free and 200 freestyle relay. Come on down. And also state qualifier. Sydney Sorbello, state qualifier in the 200 individual medley, the 100 back, 50 freestyle, 200 medley relay and the 200 freestyle relay. Congratulations to state qualifier Emma Anderson in the 100 fly. Anna Bernisconi. Anna is a state qualifier in the 50 free, the 200 medley relay and the 200 freestyle relay. Ella Kayback. Ella is a state qualifier in the 200 medley relay. Maggie Hartman, state qualifier for the 200 freestyle relay. And Maya Earlywine, state qualifier in dive. Congratulations. Great job, ladies. golf. And I just wanted to mention a couple of great statistics. Once again, our varsity golf team were suburban council champions, had an undefeated regular season of 15-0, an incredible collection of golfers, but really great young men coached by Steve Smith. At this point, I'd like to acknowledge and congratulate Austin Fox. Come on down, Austin. Austin is the section two champion, individual champion for three consecutive years, state qualifier and the co-medalist of the suburban council championship. Austin and Ryan are going to leave gaping holes in our varsity roster next year. Austin will be attending the University of Rhode Island next year. Come on down, Ryan. Ryan, also a state qualifier and was the co-medalist with his teammate, Austin, at the suburban council championship. They had only made one trophy, thinking that there would only be one first-place person. So, section two golf has finally sent Ryan his well-deserved trophy. Another outstanding season for our girls varsity tennis team. They also were suburban council champions. They were section finalists. I'd like to recognize and call down Jenna Nimmer and Madeline Carswell, our state qualifying doubles team and section finalists. This was arguably the best cross-country season for our boys and our girls combined when you look at just the incredible accomplishments. First, our boys are coached by Adam Ayers. And I'd like to bring up Jack Huber. Jack's senior, state qualifier. Jack finished 10th place in the A's this year. Congratulations to that. And junior, Matt Cavallieri. Matt also state qualifier. Come on down, Matt. Great job, guys. The boys. And finished fifth in the Federation as a team, which is a huge accomplishment. On the girl's side of the ledger, not to be outdone, coached by Jack Wrightmeyer, we had Rachel Hodge. Rachel, come on down, Rachel. Rachel qualified and she placed 19th in all Class A. Congratulations again to all our recognized student athletes. And we look forward to a great winter season as well. Okay, so for the rest of our audience, I'd like to kind of just touch base on the athletic placement process formerly known as selective classification. Questions have recently arisen about the process and just want to kind of run through what we do here in the district to kind of really keep in line what SED would like us to do. So, the athletic placement process, just the basic definition, it's a program that's a formal process through state, the state education department that evaluates students who want to participate in sports at a higher or lower level. It's very, very rare that a student would want to participate at a lower level. This is a process approved by the Board of Regents, the commissioner's regulation. And back in the fall of 2015, our Board of Education had to vote to allow our school district to take part of that process. And several board members were here and remember, we went through that process. So, advanced physical placement process starts when a head varsity coach recommends a student athlete, a middle schooler in the seventh or the eighth grade, to meet. At that time, this is typically unbeknown to the parents because we're running a pre-assessment. The coach has spoken to our modified staff. The coach has spoken to club coaches. And depending on the sport, many of our coaches will hold open courts, open gym, open track, you know, events where middle schoolers who are interested in playing a high school level sport will have the opportunity, play a bit in front of our coaching staff. The coaching staff will take note of any that they believe are physiologically mature enough, athletically gifted to be select impact athletes. This is a very formal process and those student athletes that formally start the process and as you see, will go through this very lengthy process, really must be impactful on a junior varsity, a freshman, a junior varsity or a varsity team, depending on the sport. So, step two is a pre-assessment is conducted by our middle school faculty and staff on the candidate in several areas. Those areas include academics, their behavior, their attendance at school, and very, very important, as important is their, their social maturity. They are competing, practicing, riding buses with students that are older than they are. And of course, they're athleticism. And as I mentioned, they need to be elite athletes. Upon reviewing the pre-assessments, the pre-assessments are sent to my office. I review them and we decide if we will go with a formal invitation to have the student begin the next part of the process. At that point, the middle school health office is contacted because they need to send paperwork to the home. The coach, the varsity head coach, would call home and speak to the parents and get permission, explain what the process is if they're unfamiliar with it. And once they receive that permission, we really get that, that formalized part. The next piece is the middle school health office will send the physical paperwork onto our school medical director, Dr. Gaffery. At that point, Dr. Gaffery will look at the student's physiological maturity. They'll use pieces like the Tanner scale. They will use their size, their height, their weight. And they will, he will, only he will decide if that student's physical size is matched up appropriately with a sport and a level. If the, if the school medical director at that point feels that it's dangerous, it's not appropriate, the process ends, there is no appeal. And the school district officials, myself, coaching staff, none of us have anything to do with that. So, that is rests solely on the shoulders of doctors. And it does happen. It is not a frequent occurrence, but it does happen when the process within the year stops. The next step is the middle school physical education faculty will administer what we call physical performance tests. You might remember the presidential fitness tests when we were in elementary schools. Those are the tests pretty much that are used to those students who have received the medical clearance by the school medical director. There are two to three dates per season, fall, winter, and spring, where these tests are administered by our physical education staff. That is a requirement. The test must be only administered by New York State certified physical educators. Students who pass the physical performance test are given three days to try out with their high school level team. Those who do not make the team will of course be able to then play at their modified level. The beginning dates of those seasons are staggered. Typically, the modified season begins a week after the start of fall season. Uh, sorry. Uh, sorry, the high school level season. Dolphin bowling, a little different, a little unique. Those candidates are not subjected to physical performance testing. They will play rounds or matches to see how they stack up against high school level competition. And those are the steps. So what we did is looked back at the last five years of data on first 12-13, 13-14, 14-15. Those first three years, it was still known as selective classification, a little different process. But again, with the same goal, middle schoolers who are attempting to play at a high school level. In the fall of 2015, New York State amended this to become APP. And the process was more, a little bit more tightened up. Statewide, as you see, the numbers, and again, look at our numbers, 176 student athletes being classified is an alarmingly high number. I arrived in the district, Waiter of 2014. And I remember one of my very first conversations with Bis Munro and Dr. Douglas at the time was, I was shocked by the high number of classifications. Classifications, again, if you look at SED's regulations, the parent guide, these are elite physiologically, you know, mature impactful athletes. So that number, very, very, very high. Prior to the state putting changes in, we put our own changes in. In fact, we weren't even sure the state was coming out in the fall of 15 with their new set of guidelines until that spring. So as you see, the 14-15 school year, Bethlehem Central ourselves, we really tightened things up. You see the number starting to come down. And then obviously, fall of 15, 16, 17, the numbers are much more recent. You also see the breakdown between male and female, where the number of female athletes tends to be anywhere between years, 65 and 75% of the totals are female. Very, very common. In fact, you will find that in every school district. In fact, before I came here tonight, left my office, checked my email. And one of the items with APP is each school district has to notify your competition. So we are required to send out who we classify to our schedule, to the athletic directors of these teams, as they are required to send to me. So I received chakers this evening, and this is just for the winter. Just for the winter, they had classified 45 student athletes. 35 of the 45 are female. And well, again, that's in its common. They have gymnastics, as we do, where we have seven, eight classified gymnasts. And basketball, softball, depends on the district, depends on the level of the program. But a very, very common thing you will find. So that just kind of gives us a little bit of a snapshot that tells us about our process and where we stand. I'm very, very pleased with the numbers as they've been consistent and much more manageable now. I really feel like we have really many more athletes now that fit what state has, you know, idea of what APP should be looking at.
Quick question on that last line. So do you report the names of those athletes?
Yes.
Okay. Not just the numbers, the names?
Names of sport and the level that we plan.
To the other districts?
To the other school districts on our schedule. Does anybody have any questions on APP?
Well, somebody in the audience does.
Xingford, you go first.
Well, you said that those statistics are really high. So like, doesn't that also mean that certain sports don't have, like, a middle school level?
That's a great point.
Lynn, could you repeat that?
Absolutely. So the question was, you know, the numbers, they might, are they really high with some of the athletic programs? We have 31.
Can you use the mic Lynn?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Just so it picks up on the video.
I walk around and I use my hands. The question was a great question. Many of our programs do not have multi-tier levels. JV, freshman, modified, modified nine. In those cases, how do you fill all those spots? And one of the first pieces you will find as you read through the SED guideline is this process is never to be used to fill rosters. It should never be used to be able to have a JV team. A JV team shouldn't be full of 7th and 8th graders unless those 7th and 8th graders are elite physiologically gifted athletes. And we even add the other piece to it. These athletes should be appearing in at least two-thirds, three-quarters of the contests. They should not be sitting on a bench because they will never further develop. So, great question. It should never be used in lieu of having a modified program. And it should, you know, never be used to kind of pad the numbers on a roster. One of the other things that the Suburban Council has done together, and it was as a result of Bethlehem in 2014, Mahonason in later 2014 in the summer. A lot of schools started really looking at their numbers and the alarmingly high numbers of kids that were being classified. That's what changed a lot of the focus to going to more modified programs. Just here at Bethlehem, we've now added in the last few years, modified cross-country, modified track and field, modified boys volleyball. Myself and the then varsity girls volleyball coach, we sat and we said, I said to her, having a freshman level, a JV and a varsity with no modified, I think we need a 7-12 presence. And what we've now done is we've eliminated a lot of those athletes that might be playing over their heads where they may not fit. Some absolutely do fit and deserve to be in those higher levels. But some we really need to find a home for. So having those modified teams and changing the designation from a freshman to a mod nine has also eliminated the need to go through the testing. So all those pieces together, along with formalizing our own process internally, our own housekeeping, kind of making it a tighter process, has led to numbers that are manageable. Great question.
I'm not sure why, I understand why there's so many more girls than boys.
Okay.
If you can just speak to that a little bit more.
Absolutely. Well, it depends on the sports. Obviously, sometimes it could be depending on the sports. Young ladies oftentimes in the 7th, 8th, 9th grade are able to compete at a very high level and show that they have the ability to be gifted athletes. The other piece to it is, there are simply more boys playing sports than girls. There are. As the grades get older, the numbers, we have a great participation rate from our young ladies. But in general, we'll have, as an example, freshman baseball. We have a freshman baseball team full of freshmen. Whereas freshman softball, and our new varsity softball coach, Coach McGann is with us, that is, we changed that to modified nine. Because not necessarily in Bethlehem so much, but the teams we compete against were not able to have very few freshmen. So by making it modified nine, you now have 7th and 8th graders who comprise that roster. So the short answer is, there are more males playing than females. And the nature of the sport, football. You won't find football players being selectively classified unless they are genuinely strong. You don't see it. An 8th grade, a 7th grade young man isn't probably by and large able to compete strength-wise with an 18-year-old young man. 17-year-old young man. So it's the nature of the sport. Over the years, we've had outstanding, we've had a lot of outstanding student athletes. One that just recently committed to a Division 1 college, Grace Hoteling. Outstanding athlete and came up to the varsity level as an 8th grader. Not only could she compete, she was one of our best players and led us to a state appearance, Final Four state appearance. So when you have that right athlete going through the process, the process works. Because it extends their eligibility. Because every athlete who walks in the door is a 9th grader. They have a four-year clock that starts ticking, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior. If they are appropriately through the process and just, you know, are able to compete at that level, they can extend their career. Five, maybe six years, depending on their grade. Which, you know, obviously helps them grow. And that's certainly not to say that an athlete who does not go through the process can never play varsity or can never play at a high school level. Depends on the sport, depends on the competitive level of the sport. Some sports we have are amongst the state's best. Some are in the middle and some are developing. But modified nine, and I think sometimes people get caught up in the name modified nine. Modified nine is freshman. So if you're an average freshman, you're playing modified nine. If you are a strong, above-average gifted freshman, you might be playing junior varsity. And again, it depends on the program, depends on the sport.
So I have some questions. And I just want to make sure that I'm not questioning the program. I think we have a wonderful athletics program. But I do have concerns about some of the gifted students and developing high school students for high school sports. And making sure that it's not inadvertently covering pay-to-play. So let me elaborate a little bit. So soccer, we have two, soccer, girls soccer, we have two modified teams. About 40, roughly 40 girls. One modified team, some 7th and 8th graders, usually the other ones 8th and 9th graders. Looking at the roster, there are roughly, I think, nine 9th graders that played this year in the modified nine. Looking at the JV roster, we have eight 8th graders playing JV. Which from a layperson looking at it, it looks like we're not developing 9th graders to play JV or we'd have more 10th graders on the team. It looks like they're getting developed, the really outstanding ones are being developed in the modified and bumping up to JV. And they're not starting, the 9th graders are not starting, from what I understand. From what I understand, so I could be wrong, but from what I understand, the 9th, those 9th graders did not start this season. So what are we doing to develop those students who are in 9th grade playing modified to possibly move them to the next level? And those kids that are getting moved up as 8th graders, are they the ones doing travel soccer? Are they the ones where the parents have the money to do the extra? And I'd be curious to know, like, of those 8th graders that made the JV team, how many of them play travel soccer? So that's where my concern as a board member is, making sure that we have opportunities for high schoolers, because out of that 40 number, eight of them are on girls soccer. So that's 20% of that number. So we have eight gifted 8th graders. And so next year, those 9th graders that might not have been developed on that modified team or don't have the means to pay for the travel soccer are not going to move to the next level. So that's where I, my focus kind of is.
No, and I understand your question. Basically, it is two different things. So I'll take the first part with developing 9th graders. Again, modified nine is a freshman level. That's what we had two years ago, we would call freshman level. And we would have 7th and 8th graders on that freshman level going through that process. For Bethlehem Central, it was just semantics. It was changing the name. The process is the same, the same athlete that appeared on a modified nine roster would have appeared on a freshman roster.
Right.
Assuming they would have passed through that piece. But I think, you know, anyone who's coached or competed in athletics or just like singing or any skill, the more you do it, the better you're at.
Correct.
You become at it. And also, you do plateau at a certain point. Not every single person is going to be a varsity athlete who competes. That's just the sheer reality.
That is, yep.
And at the high school level, the junior varsity, varsity level, it is about competition. The most skilled athletes play. Those that, at the mod nine and the modified level, it's much more about developmental. And yes, skill progression is absolutely a key. But we're also working on things like prioritizing your time, how to become a student athlete, how to work together as a team. Those are like the, you know, intrascholastic athletics 101 is what modified athletics is. And modified nine is that, kind of that tweener, that bridge that goes between the mod and the JV, when you don't have a freshman level.
Could I pause you there for one second?
Sure.
Just to add on, is that, it's, well, it's not a full modified nine team. It's not a freshman, there's not enough kids to be a full modified nine team. I believe from this year's roster, there were nine 9th graders on the modified.
There never were.
Right, right.
They never were.
So it's a combination. But I'm going to take it one step further. Let's say they may not be the best players. Let's say, you know, obviously, the 8th graders are moving up to varsity. Would you still be able to compete or win with the students that are in 9th going to 10th? And giving them an opportunity versus moving up the younger students where they could play on a modified nine and still be developed?
Right, that's subjective. And I have people like Coach Rogan and Coach McGann who are very experienced coaches that I have to trust that they know how to evaluate talent. So what I was going to say, and I don't mean to cut you off, but if you don't play, you can't get better. So by bringing up 9th graders to junior varsity, simply based on the fact that they're in the 9th grade, they would not be seeing playing time. And when you don't see playing time, you're not going to grow. At the modified nine, while you might not be starting, and I don't know who's starting and who's not. They may not start because they missed practices. I mean, they might have gone on vacation. I don't know why, you know. There's a bunch of reasons why people don't start. But playing is obviously going to get them better. So I'm sorry, you had a question?
Well, I'm saying, developing the 9th graders so they can play as 10th graders on JV and letting the 8th graders move up to the modified nine where they're playing on modified nine. From what I understand, and again, you would have to verify this with any of your coaches, the 9th graders did not start. I don't believe the 9th graders started any of the games this year on the modified nine.
Right.
Maybe one, maybe two. So if they're not playing and they're getting 15 minutes of a game, we're not developing them.
Well, they practice every day.
No, they do. Correct.
That's where you get better. You don't get better at games.
No, I understand.
I mean, anybody who's coached knows that your work is done during the practice week. And that's how you make gains on those who start and play more minutes. It's never at your game time. So going back to your point why we couldn't have more 9th graders to play so they can make it on 10th. If they don't have the ability to safely and appropriately play at a junior varsity level, then they're not going to develop, you know, from a competition-wise, clearly, they're not going to, we're not going to be fielding as competitive a team as we could if we have those that athletically-wise deserve to be there because they're higher skilled. And I would say, you know, and I, you know, I'll make the comparison to, again, anything. Whether it's music, if just, you know, if you want to play the trumpet, not everybody's in the highest band. If you try out for the school play, not everybody has the lead, not everybody. At some point, the highest level person, skill-wise, will have that piece.
Well, in the musicals, usually it is the upper-level classmen who are the leads, 11th and 12th graders. And in band and orchestra, you can't make symphonic in 9th grade in either orchestra or band. You have to wait till you're a 10th grader. And I'm going to go to tennis. So just for tennis, I'm going to use Kyle because he's not here, so I can use him. He did not make the tennis team in 10th grade. He was, but that was a big year. I think it was 12 or 13 where selective classification wasn't as big of a deal. So there were a lot of 7th and 8th graders who actually made the team that year. And so he didn't make it. So he went out, he went and he tried again. He made it. He was captain that year of the JV team. And he won every one of his matches. Now, he could have won every one of his matches the year before. And he was older, but they put 7th and 8th graders on the team. So maybe that's changed since then. But I feel that, that's what I'm bringing awareness to. I know you wanted to develop some of these kids, but there's eight 8th graders on soccer. That's saying that there's a lot of gifted soccer players in our district. That's over half of the JV roster. So I just want to be sure that we're being cognizant that if there are other older classmen that can be developed, that we're doing our best to make sure it isn't a pay-to-play kind of situation.
Well, pay-to-play is a completely different subject. Those that seek out additional opportunities to hone their skill are going to get better and are going to show that, probably during tryouts, that they're just playing at a higher level. There are a number of, and it's not just soccer, it's travel, it's basketball.
Lacrosse, everything.
Lacrosse. That's a proliferation of youth sports. You know why? Because there's a ton of money to be made in that. And that's why you see this proliferation. That's why our gymnasiums and our fields are 24/7 have people in them playing. I mean, they're obviously town groups, but that's, there's a ton of clubs playing all the time. So yes, I would say that we can draw a comparison that those that seek out opportunities to play more are going to get better because they're playing more.
Right. Because they can pay for them too. So that's where I just want to make sure.
Well, our coaches, we also have out-of-season guidelines from the Suburban Council. The Suburban Council has very clear, specific rules where our coaches cannot be with kids 24/7 all the time, out of season. And the reason for that is they don't want to put undue pressure and influence on those student athletes, particularly the multi-sport student athlete. So if you think of some of the schools in our league that have state title level, Niskiuna Boys Lacrosse, I live in Niskiuna. Every single young man and young lady walks around with a lacrosse stick through town. They all want to play varsity lacrosse for Coach Vorgang. Their football program is... Their football program is, 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 not to be disrespectful, but they are really in a developmental stage for years. There's probably a correlation. You have a highly influenced, you know, a coach with a tremendous amount of influence who is basically having kids doing workouts. Not illegal workouts, so I'm not trying to say they're breaking rules, I'm not, what I'm saying though is, the culture there is that lacrosse is our bread and butter. So, their football program is not getting numbers. So, their, their lacrosse coach is providing open gyms, they're free. They're, they're not, it's not pay-to-play, they're, they're working out in the weight room. So, there's those opportunities. Now, while our coaching staff, football program is lifting weights right now. Ice hockey has a rap team in the summertime, free. Or, I mean, there's a nominal for like ice rental and things like that. But those programs are going on, and if a student athlete wants to get better, they absolutely can get better. Our coaches meet with the kids at the end of the season and say, "These are the areas that you really need to work on if you make, if you hope to jump to that next level." Just like when kids are cut, they meet with students, they're students, you know, the kids who tried out. We don't, we never post a list and say, you know, "Good luck next year." They meet with them and they say, "These are the skills that you really need to work on."
And I know we're no different than any other suburban school. This is not unique to Bethlehem. I know that it occurs across all of the, the schools that we play. I just, I just want to make sure that we are cognizant of those students that have the ability to play. If we have the ability to win with somebody who is not as developed and they are an older student, that we're being cognizant of that when we have forty people. I'm just using girl soccer because it's easy to pick on, because it's.
Well, if you don't mind, I'll ask my girl soccer coaches. If Pierre, Coach McGann, if you can comment just on, I mean, you, you're the JV soccer coach. So, if you can just talk a little bit about the process, the trial process, give you the microphone.
Just, well, just to let you know, number-wise too, we had six eighth graders on the JV team and five ninth graders.
Then maybe the roster's wrong online.
And two 10th graders and one 11th grader, just so you guys have the facts. What we do, Coach Rogan and I, we have tryouts together, and they, we go through a whole process, we have a whole assessment. And then we watch the girls and test them in watching for strength and kicking and passing and everything else. And then we take the girls that we feel will help support the program to win the games. So, for safety concerns and their ability, their touch on the ball and their pass on the ball is what we're looking for, and can they compete at that upper level? And it's also safety concern is where you have girls who come in who may not be as skilled as other players, and you say, "Okay, well, they're not quite ready for junior varsity, they need to go down." And the other question I tell the girls that we talk to all the time is, "What have you done on your own?" You don't need to go out and pay for a team to go on, to go play alley cats or so on. What are you doing at home? Are you working on your weaker foot? You know, are you working on your left foot? Are you working on your striking? And some of the answers for the kids are, "No, I haven't done any of that." And that's stuff they can do by themselves against a wall and so on and so forth.
I'm not questioning your selection, so I want to be very clear. I'm sure you're quite confident picking who's on the team, and I'm sure there probably are the better players. I, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we can look at that, that's all. The greater.
I'll stop talking and let everyone else talk.
The, the greater issue I see from this discussion is, obviously, you know about the benefits of athletics for all of our students, you know, not only exercise and health, but teamwork, discipline, all those things. So, what are we doing to support our students who want to engage in athletics, who want to gain those benefits, who would really benefit from them, but weren't privileged enough to start soccer in third grade? What are we doing for those kids who are ninth graders, who want to play in 10th grade, but are not as good as seventh graders? What are we doing to support them?
We have a tremendous amount of youth programs in our town, that, that's, I mean.
Which are expensive.
Right.
And even if they weren't, whether they're expensive or not, the question is, what is the school district doing? Not what are they doing outside? So, for example, I think to your point, if you have a student who suddenly in ninth grade says, "You know, I have, all of a sudden, I have this thing for soccer," and they start working, but there's no way somebody in ninth grade, who starts in ninth grade, is going to become as good within a year as somebody who started, you know, when they were in second or third grade. They've been playing that whole long time, they've had all kinds of training experiences. So, what do we do? Do these students just fall off, lose interest, and we don't help them? Or is there something that we can do?
There's a couple of things. I mean, that sounds like intramurals, what you're saying, sounds like intramurals. I know the intramurals program in our district runs through building principals, and that's certainly something that, as we go into budget season, we might be able to discuss. But that does sound like intramurals, where kids who want to play like the sport. You know, I know in our physical education philosophy and all the years that I headed up physical education, fitness for life is something that we always want. Our participation numbers of all secondary students is in the sixty percent, we're in the sixties in percent. So, the great bulk of our, you know, the bulk of our students in the secondary level are participating. We have no-cut sports. Our running sports, all three, all three seasons are no-cut sports. Obviously, there are those that, you know, are track and field, cross-country, you know, strong athletes, and they get to learn it and they do it and they, they get better at it. But we also have some student athletes that have never participated in athletics prior to, and they use it as an opportunity to develop their bodies a little bit, to learn healthy habits, and to be part of a team. So, we do have, from our, our intrascholastic athletic program, things like that. Our, oftentimes, again, depending on numbers and who signs up, over the last couple of years, our junior varsity field hockey levels have been no-cut. And, you know, so we do, wherever possible, we keep as many as we can. And oftentimes, with those kind of niche sports, we have students who haven't been playing for years and years. You know, some of those programs, you know, like a field hockey, it's not like baseball or basketball or soccer, where there's a ton of little leagues and kids start at a very little age. So, when we do have those opportunities, we of course keep as many as we can. There's a safety supervision issue, obviously, so you can't keep everyone. There's a logistical issue, you know, you have to have places to safely practice, appropriate equipment, amounts of uniforms, which obviously is a budgetary piece. So, obviously, we have constraints at some levels. But we do offer, you know, we do offer three varsity sports, five if we include the two unified sports as our helper teammates. We have, we have five opportunities for, for every student to earn a varsity letter if they work hard and, you know, show improvement. And then the other piece for like a soccer, basketball, baseball, those kinds of sports, it sounds like an intramural type of piece, which, you know, we would have to certainly look into. And together, myself and Building Principals along with Dave and Jody, you know, might be able to come up with something with that. But, but that's a separate entity, that's definitely not intrascholastic, that's intramural.
I think if we want to increase opportunity for a range of abilities, that's something the district should consider. And whether you want to bring it up at budget time, I think that's something the board can definitely consider. You know, if you want to increase the opportunities for all kids, regard, you know, then, then come up with a program. And then the board has to decide if they're going to fund it.
And, and I will tell you, we, we fight like heck to find qualified coaches for the, you know, hundred, the almost 100 teams, 32 programs that we have. So, you know, the intramurals, we would have to find, you know, qualified people who have a knowledge base, not at varsity level, you know, knowledge base, but a knowledge base to safely, you know, execute the program, CPR first aid, you know, all those pieces, so.
And field space.
I'm sorry.
And field space.
Absolutely, field space. And building space, the gymnasiums right now, with all the basketball teams we have, and we're one of the only four schools in the whole section that still have gymnastics, you know, so we, yeah, you're right.
Could you, would you be able to provide the board the breakdown? Obviously, we don't need any names, but where the forty female and the eleven males are spread across?
Which programs?
Yeah.
Certainly.
Just to kind of get, maybe it's just, maybe it's just one area that, you know.
It's a couple, I can, I can tell you off the top of my head, I know the numbers.
You know, I think.
It's, Kurt, well, that was the 16, 17 school year. The bulk were gymnastics, you know, out of that group. We had a few female basketball players. We did not, I don't believe we had any soccer players, we had zero girl soccer players in 16, fall of 16. We had probably a couple of softball players. We had, but, but the bulk would be probably in that year, I think we might have had a cheerleader, because cheerleading in the winter is, is a sport, not a club like in the fall. So, I believe we did have a modified cheerleader in there. But ironically, there was no soccer at all. So, it depends, you know, it does depend, as, as I emailed you, you know, it depends year to year with the personnel, with the participation numbers. There are some grades that we have where they love girls lacrosse. And then there are, two years later, you'll see the lacrosse numbers are leveled off, and all of a sudden, field hockey, great point here. In our district, field hockey in the, in most of the section is really stagnant, and a lot of places have dipped down in the participation numbers. Through the free clinics that Coach Wilson runs at the town park every summer, that's one of the biggest reasons that our field hockey numbers are huge, because she grabs those little ones in the fourth, fifth grade, sixth grade, before sports start, right, before the seventh grade. And now they've fallen in love with a sport that, it's not that common sport, like, you know, soccer, basketball. So, that's why our numbers are there, because our coaches do do a lot of those things, to, to get kids and, and kind of be able to start to watch students that have a natural inclination to the sport.
You indicated earlier that there are more boys playing sports at the high school level. Is that because more boys start playing a sport? Or is there a dip in the number of girls? I'm just wondering if we're losing girls from the sports programs.
Well, there, there's a few pieces there, it's the nature of the sports. So, as an example, varsity football doesn't make cuts. Our football numbers are, are struggling. I mean, you know, from Pop Warner all the way up, is it the fear of concussions and all of that CTE, all the things we watch in the news. But there are no cuts. So, any young man who is going to be a dedicated teammate, who's going to show up and do his best, they're, they're on the roster, they earn a varsity letter. I can tell you, because I'm on the sidelines at every game, many, many of those students may not play every single game. Some of them will only play a few snaps during the course of a full season, because they're really truly not, it's not a safety, because we wouldn't let them play if it was a true safety piece, but they don't match up well. You know, with football, obviously, it's a very physical sport. Boys lacrosse, we make minimal amount of cuts, because in that particular sport, there's mass substitutions. You could bring in five people. With football, we bring in, depending on if we're on special teams, we'll bring in seven, eight, nine different guys, because there's different scenarios for different people. And our coaching staff for many years, Coach Leach would always try to find scenarios to put someone in, even if it's only two or three snaps per, per game. So, that's, that's part of, part of it is the nature of the sports. But statistics show, and, and we see this across our league, the statistics in our league, seventh, eighth grade, the numbers are very close, you know, when you take out the nature of the sports. The numbers are very, very close. As they get older, 10th, 11th, 12th grade, many young ladies tend, you know, they, they go into other areas. They're maybe more academic, you know, worried about their academics more, they might be more interested in the clubs more. We just see the numbers tail off as, as kids get older. And in 11th, 12th grade, the numbers on boys also tends to dip too. Some of them are, are pushing for college, you know, work on their college admissions, work on their grades, getting a part-time job. There's tons of reasons why, but we just tend to notice that it does affect female athletes a little bit more. They also oftentimes will plateau in their athleticism at a younger age. You know, young ladies tend, you know, will grow faster if boys catch up later. Gymnastics, just watch the Olympics, the best gymnasts in the world are these little tiny, oftentimes very, very young. You know, Nadia Komenich, 14 years old, winning the gold medal, you know, same thing. Our, our, many times, our strongest gymnasts are our real little ones, because their body weight is so low, they, right.
That makes sense.
So, there's a lot of factors into it, but that is something that is seen across the board in our league.
I just want to make sure that, given, you know, all of the benefits of participating.
Yeah.
In sport, we're not losing, there's not some reason we're losing girls.
No, I think, I think all the outreach that we do, our clubs, our, our town teams have a very nice relationship with our, with our school, school coaches. You know, Ms. Johnson and I, what was it, last year, the Attorney General's Office? We, our district was lauded for the amount of participation that we have, not just the entire student body, but it was a Title IX study that Kathy and I had several conversations with. And at the end of it, we, we had glowing, glowing results. I want to say we were like sixty-four percent of our middle schoolers, the numbers of programs offered. We have, we have fifteen male programs, fifteen female programs, and two coeducational programs. You can't be more even.
How, as far as numbers, how do, how do they compare to other districts, men and women that are, that are playing?
Right on, right on par, in fact, if, for the most part. I want to say, because we had this about three years ago, and it might have changed in the last three years, but our numbers were above average, you know, for our league. And I think it's things like, in fact, we have gymnastics, we're one of only four, so that ups our number of female students. Our field hockey numbers are higher, because we have three levels and it's higher each level than most, with the exception of the Shenandoahs, Saratogas, who are, you know, state level title, and it's part of their culture. You know, Bethlehem, girls basketball, girls soccer, girls tennis, that's, those are customary, very strong, you know, our track and field, those are very customary Bethlehem strength sports.
I'll also say, Polly, just having an older daughter, it's cultural. Because I, because at some point, you're going to have to get in that weight room. And I don't think a lot of young women are comfortable weightlifting at the level that you're going to need to weightlift in to maintain a varsity level performance. Some of them are afraid of getting muscled, even though you can't bulk up like a guy, you just can't. I mean, your, your body will change. So, I think, I know, I have a daughter who's an athlete, and I think a number of young women, once they get to a certain age, feel like to be a quote jock is not equivalent of being feminine. It's a, it's a cultural thing. And so, and you have to love your sport or be comfortable with that kind of dichotomy that society throws at you in order to go forward.
But I think it also speaks to the wealth of opportunities we have in our district, whereas many other districts have cut, you know, the arts programs and the music programs and the theater programs. We have all those opportunities for our students. So, when they get to the high school, they may say, "Well, you know, I'm going to give up the sport so I can do the theater program or something." So, it's, it's a good problem we have.
But I also think there's a little bit of self, I think we're not looking at, there is self-selective, that they're not going to try out the following year, because they know that they're not at the level at some of the younger players. And from previous years, they can see that they know that the younger players are going to make it over. So, I think when you get to sophomore year, there's a lot of self-selection that they're not going to try out. And I think as a district, if we can still have a winning team, because in my mind, this is just my mind, it's on the view of the board, when you're in high school, if you have the ability to play and we have the ability to, to win, and it's, to me, it's not all about winning, but you're an athletic director, it's all about winning. If we have the ability to let those players develop and play four years while they're in high school and let an eighth grader play on a modified team for a year versus bumping them up, we should just be cognizant of that, that's.
I, I think our, I, I feel safe to say that I believe our coaching staff looks at all-around the best way to go about. We try to, not we try to, we, we always extend the careers as long as we can, because of the incredible value of participating in intrascholastic athletics. You definitely can't win at the same level, and you definitely can't automatically win because you have an older player. That's definitely not true. I coached a very long time.
Right.
And, and that's not true. But what is true is we can make the experience as rich an experience as possible. That's why I love that our school supports and our league supports several no-cut sports. So, while it might, you know, while you might want to be the shortstop on varsity baseball, if your ability doesn't say you have that, if you can't do that, but, you know, you're really fast, you can be a, you can work on being a great sprinter. I mean, you can work on being a great unified basketball. There's opportunities to represent our community and our district athletically.
No, and I, I understand that. I guess, next year, when we see the roster for the JV soccer team, I'll be interested to see how many of those ninth graders make it to JV.
And if they develop to that point, they will. And if they don't, then they won't. It's, it's, you know, it's cyclical.
Yeah, I also think it depends on the sport, because obviously, you know, I, you know, my daughter played basketball. And I know some women self-selected themselves out of that program, because they knew, given the nature of that sport and the nature of the athletes in the district, they were not going to make the team. So, they didn't want to try out in their junior year and not get selected. So, they just said, "I, I see the writing on the wall."
Boys do it as well.
Yeah. Whether it was younger or not. What I was saying about younger players, people just realize that the writing on the wall is they're going to take 12, and I'm, I know, I'm not going to be one of those 12s. I also know that coaches, whether it's, I know from basketball, I know from track, coaches sit down and ask the players, "What are your goals?" It may be, "I want to play more playtime, I want to lose weight, I want..." And they work with athletes to achieve their goals. So, some of the goals aren't going to be realistic, but that's up to the coach and the athlete to have a discussion. And I'll just, but I think we might disagree on this, but it's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
I don't want to see the rosters next year.
I do.
It's, it's not my, it's not my job as a board member, this is, I think, where we disagree. For me, it's not my job to look at the rosters to say. For me, it's not my job to look at the rosters to say, this coach made this, and how many ninth graders and how many eighth graders? If, if the athletic director and the coaches and the superintendent tell me, there's the process, and we have medical doctors, and we have coaches at multiple levels telling us, here's the team, and who's going to get the playtime, I'm just saying for me as a board member, I'm just saying for me as a board member, I am not going to look at a roster and say, this ninth grader should have been...
I would never say who should make the team. I'm just interested to see. And it's my philosophy that I think high schoolers should play high school sports. So that's, I think, where the philosophy comes into play, that regardless, win or lose, it's a high school, it's high school athletics. I don't think middle schoolers should be playing on a high, high school team. They have four years to play when they're here. And it, it's just like theater, some years we have strong years and some years we don't. But guess what? We don't take sixth, seventh, and eighth graders to play in a high school musical.
But our, we've allowed it through the selective classification process.
No, I understand.
So we don't want that, that would have to be...
Right, no, I know, I'm just saying.
We did away with the process, the process is in place.
Yeah. Well, that's a, yeah, that's a conversation.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Len.
And coaches.
And coaches, thank you. Okay. Item number seven, recognition of visitors. At this time, we'd like to recognize anybody who would like to come and speak on an agenda item. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on an agenda item? Okay. Number eight, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance, action items one through four.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just again, a big thank you to Paul Wing for another donation. He is so generous.
He is very generous. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item number nine, professional personnel, is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel, action items one through 10.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just, go ahead. Go ahead, you've seniority.
No, 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 it doesn't, it doesn't really make any difference about the, you know, sort of retirees.
Significant number of years.
We honor them. But I, I want to mention specifically Bill Barasa because it just mentions about his resignation for retirement reasons as being the technical advisor to the plays or whatever. And he actually retired as a teacher from this district before I got on the board, so it's over 30 years ago. And, and since then, he has been doing, doing a lot of this work. I mean, he started out, he was, he was a sixth-grade teacher at Slenderland School, okay? Because the school, elementary was K through 6, and, and there was a junior high, 7 through 9, and whatever.